Yeah, it's all so good. I know.
No, it's okay.
I'm glad my this one too.
I did, I sent you here. You think to review was your last packet? And then, but it should have been sent in, didn't send back to them. Not until you approve it. So she has it right now, she'll send it right now? Why can't we have it? We don't have any hard copies. She has it. Why can't she have it? Yep, they're ready.
Probably just mic on that.
You have no one. Here's yours. We always give you ten. Okay, thank you. So, Susan, I just lost your pen. I just lost mine. I left your pen.
It's not set for you?
Your pen.
Right up call this meeting is ordered first up with the flag allegiance. By flag allegiance, you could play United States of America and to the Republic of the West's hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Levine, can we do a roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call. Councillor Maras?
Yes.
Councillor Jivery?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
Councillor Levine, here. Councillor Throdsen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, first up, agenda. We'll look at consent agenda. Do you have any discussion or questions?
I have a couple changes I would like to see through the minutes. And it is in the first section of it. And it's with the $25 ordinance that we had talked about. We wanted to look at that ordinance and we haven't gotten it yet, so I'm kind of confused. I did talk to Billy. It is a flat $25 fee. The 5% is removed. But also at this meeting, the mayor was not here, so he couldn't have made a motion. In the minutes, right here. So, I thought we...
Councillor Thompson? Councillor Thompson, I can relook at my notes and correct my correction.
And then I would like a change in the appearance area. When Councillor Throdsen asked why the client include the domes, I knew we had to have the domes. I asked where. Because I was concerned about them putting them by the alley. That was my question on that. And then in the new business, could we have a dollar amount put in there? What was going to be requested for the money from all of the gambling? We don't have a dollar amount. I don't remember if it was 200 or 250.
250.
It was 250.
Gambling amount for Halloween?
Yes, please. So it was 250. I didn't recall that.
Where is that one? New business. New business, okay.
Thank you, that was what I was having. Questions on? Sound good.
I have a comment on that ordinance. I believe I made a motion to have direct clerk to draft a new change, amendment to the 25. I think that's where the motion, it's not really a motion here. So I think something, if you want to check on that.
Is it kind of that table because we didn't have enough information or something?
Yeah.
Do you recall that first up? Okay, so that's good, but obviously I need some...
And then I just have one. I'd like to pull the people service invoice. For discussion, I guess, and payment. So, I'm not sure if Councillor Maras and Councillor Jivery had a chance to look at the people service invoice?
Uh, no.
$17,720 for July. That's why I pulled it. I did have a conversation with Mr. Christiansen regarding the invoice and the number of hours that they worked down at this wastewater plant. So he was going to get back to us some adjustments that can be made. I know we went to $100 an hour in July, beginning July 1st. But the plant was supposed to be completed and up and running by then, and it was not. I wish I would have mentioned that we should not exceed the previous contract amount, which was about 9,000 something. So that's why I pulled it, and he was going to do some checking. And I would like to have the city clerk request all the time sheets for July to current. So I guess I'll make a motion to this effect. Direct the city clerk to request all the time sheets for July 1st through September 13th. And for review, and then I would also like to know when we are getting keys for the building? Because currently we do not have any keys to get in the building, and I'd like to know where the logbook is. That is to be kept at the office. And written in when anybody comes down there or does testing or anything like that. And I was also, and I'd like to ask where the scale is. What happened with the scale? That was city property. And it's gone, so.
Okay. So, I'll second it with just one other comment, if it goes along your line. Because I didn't even have enough, I thought they were short staffed.
Correct.
So they couldn't give us somebody for this amount of hours, so this doesn't add up.
Right, and I asked him that. I said, even if someone was down there 30 hours a week, or not even.
Yeah.
They didn't mow, they didn't whack the hill, they did nothing. They didn't grease gears, they did no maintenance. They did some testing, the sampling, that's it. And that's not 167 hours. So, that's why I called them to talk to him, and he said, oh, I was expecting a phone call. So he knew that there was going to be questions.
There was an email supporting that too, wasn't there, with them on August 13th?
There, the email, we did not have a contract, which I wish I had, we had talked about getting a contract for the proposal, which didn't happen. And he said we had email correspondence back and forth with clerk. Fine, we brought it up at the meeting, but this is out of hand.
Well, no, when I viewed that, I was just going to say with that email, it says in there that they could have been number of hours that they could in that email.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so there was some correspondence in there about what they could do, and it would nowhere.
It wouldn't be full time.
They weren't there full time when we had a contract with them. And that's what I brought up at one of the other meetings when he was here. They were not there every day for eight hours a day.
No, good, good point.
Yeah, so.
I saw that it was happening, that's the actual building, so.
And that's...
So are we just going to hold on to that then? Is that what you're saying until we get all the information?
Pull it and then, yeah. All right.
I got you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, uh, next up is appearances. Jeremy, do we have to go through the files first?
Well, I thought we, did we have a motion to approve? We just pulled the two items, okay.
We didn't approve the consent agenda, just that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 5.2 less the public people service bill and 5.3 for the travel request.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jeremy. All right, number six, appearances. Jeremy, you're up first.
So, just so the whole council was aware, I did meet with Mayor and Eric and a couple other, I think, I think one council person was there. So, we kind of had, we discussed the plans for the first street project, just to make sure that it was clear what we're doing, what the scope was. Kind of worked out the questions that were kind of brought up at the last meeting. So, I think we're all kind of happy at the end of the day. We talked about a couple of things that we're going to bring up at a pre-construction meeting just so the contractor is aware of some of the city's concerns. And I think we'll likely, if this project moves ahead, we'll likely have a pre-construction meeting probably later this winter. The contractor is not likely, I'm going to reach out to him now and get project, you know, contract documents signed and sealed and everything like that. But for the sake of this being a next year project, we'll probably have a pre-construction meeting, maybe after the new year, just so it's kind of fresh. And, you know, if we do one now, now waiting six, seven months before they actually getting started, so that's kind of my...
I thought they were going to do some of this fall.
Uh, probably not. I mean, because, because really it's all, even if they did just the removals, I mean, maybe a mess for winter time. So, and there's really not, the project is simple enough where it's, you know, sidewalks and curves and light poles. There's really not much else to it that they can probably do and finish in time. So, that was kind of the, but again, if we tell them now, we can kind of, we can urge them to maybe start right away in the spring. Maybe it'll be, because it's on their list, it's very hot, hopefully we can get it done over the years. But anyways, if there's any additional questions or concerns, I'm all ears. Otherwise, KGM is a little bit again for 247, 817. I know I gave a set of consulting plans to the street supervisor if there's any questions from the council.
Can I have a question?
I have a question for you.
Yeah, okay.
What is the engineer's estimate on this again?
Of course, the one I did print out. The engineer's estimate was, it was 2, it was 210 or 220 with the contingency. Because we were about, I think we rounded up, we were about 40,000 over. So right now, yeah, so it was probably 210,000, I think, was the approximate engineer's estimate.
Okay, 210, okay, it's here in the email. So, what are we looking at for the difference then? I mean, 38,000, like, we have to come up with that funding?
Correct.
For next year then?
Yep.
Okay.
And we do have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor for the O'Brien project tomorrow. I know we had a little discussion about working on some alternatives with that project. That may be able to, you know, if we can, if we can save a little bit on that project, we can carry some over in terms of the grant funding, which is perfectly fine. So, honestly, nothing says so right now. That means not until tomorrow, until things get over, we will, we will, but, but yes. As it sits right now, there's 40,000 that essentially we have, the city would have.
Jeremy, how come when you got to do that, when you figure out, kind of guess what it costs, why don't you guess higher?
I put a lot of it in the...
What would have happened here though is we would have got the money for it. But I triple R meeting was before the bid came out.
Right.
So we lost 35,000 for that.
Can I comment on that?
Can you go back and ask for it now? Has that ever happened or no?
It doesn't hurt to ask. I think it'd be, I'd be curious what Chris's response would be. Because it's a citywide infrastructure, there's a couple of projects along the road one.
Yeah.
I think, like I said, it, the light at the end of the tunnel is that there is more money in there, but it's split between two projects. So again, the O'Brien project, there are things that we can shave off of that project. This one, it was really hard to, you know, unless you basically eliminate half a block, you're not going to make up that 40,000. Whereas, you know, we did a bunch of value engineering for the O'Brien project. So we already kind of know that there are some parts of that project that we can kind of come back on.
Shave, yeah.
But yeah, my only comment on the engineer's estimate, and I apologize if that's the way this works out, but, you know, the contingencies we put in there are based on very recent current projects and unit pricing, and we throw 20% on top of that. And if, you know, if it's coming over, it kind of is what it is. But I will say that over, over the past year, a lot of our engineers' estimates have been, well, for, well, I, for other cities, they've been, well, the building, the O'Brien one is kind of another weird one. But, anyway, I'm not trying to defend anything. I'm just saying, a lot of our engineers' estimates come pretty close to other cities, especially, especially for concrete work. You know, the building was kind of a, that was a weird one, because that was more of an architect's, you know, those numbers came from them and what they're seeing. So that was kind of a outlier in my opinion, but...
Okay, and then I have a question. I'm looking at the budget sheet where I'm not understanding it. So it has First Street Construction is 175. You're taking out the First Street Engineering, which isn't paid by I triple R V, correct? So, but then the contingency fee, so then we would have to make up all that extra money, correct? Your money that isn't in, it doesn't get paid for by I triple R V. And then the contingency would eventually get caught up. But to me, that, I'm just really confused on that 247,000, I believe it is, that 247, 817. So how did the First Street come at 175 on the budget sheet? That's where I'm really confused. It's not even close.
Right, and that's, so the contingency is the key there. So the 175 was the engineer's, you know, the, the construction cost estimate. But then we take that whole number and add 20% for kind of this exact reason. When bids come in, we kind of expect them to go either higher or lower.
So that number would have been plus 20%.
Exactly, yep. And that's why I'm saying, so when you look at 175 versus 247, that's not really the comparison. The contingency is there to help make up the unknowns of the bidding process.
Right, that part I got, but then the engineering, I did not think that that was going to go back in. That's, that can be covered?
I think, to my knowledge, not I triple R covered engineering.
Okay.
I think that's, yeah.
So I have a question then. So basically, your engineering estimate should have been 340, 240? Because you should have included your engineering fees in that.
Well, the engineering is a separate item under I triple R. So, but did it show it separately there?
Well, on the budget, it is broken down, 175, 35,000 and 30,000 on engineering fees. So the total was 240, which is still under 247, 817, something like that, right?
Right.
Right. So going forward, can you please include your engineer's estimates on the bid tabs?
Yes.
So we can look at comparisons?
Yep, I did want to go there last time I know that concern was brought up. So engineer's estimates will make sure to be on bid tabs for...
Then, did you happen to get an engineer's estimate printout? On this project? Yes. No. Okay, can you just get that to the clerk, please?
Oh, revise it or a...
Whatever your engineer's estimate with the details.
Oh.
So, we need to make a motion to approve this then, the project?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution toward the 2024 North First Street Urban Sidewalk Project to KGM in the amount of 247, 817.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion here.
Okay, then I, I saw that the other item was just to talk quickly about pumps for the pump O'Brien. Is there any further discussion on that? I know I tried to provide a little bit more clarification. I don't know if there are any more questions about which, we ran into two points or what decision might have been made before, but...
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
Did you want to have him order the pump now when the O'Brien is closing for the winter? Or did, and then wait until spring or...
Yeah, we could just, well, it might go off, might wait to gamble, you know, might go off, might go down. Do we decide, I don't want a three quarter horse, is that what we're going to?
And what was the cost? We don't, I don't have any information.
I don't have any.
Uh, 4,525 in three persons.
With construction, are they going to maybe need water out there maybe?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I would think that they would. That's why I'm saying, I think we have to get it.
We probably should do as soon as possible, if we can even do it in small.
Yep, are you talking about Mark? Mark's getting in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he basically said they, he can have all this ready and be out there within a couple of weeks, you know, it's basically. So, he didn't have any concerns about schedule, because I asked him that.
No, that was, is that part of the, can we use part of the grant that we got or not on that? Wasn't that well?
So it's not, it's not included in the grant, but because of how it ties into the O'Brien project, we can ask Chris for the I triple R and see if that can be included somehow. Um, I don't, I don't know if they would allow that, but...
Well, in the original bid, we didn't know for sure if we needed it to update dwell or not.
Right.
Actually, we do, now that, now that it's, you know, went down and we looked into it, we're a little small.
I mean, it would kind of be analogous to having a change order on the O'Brien project to include this work essentially. So it is part of the same project. I, I think it'd be an easy enough question to ask Chris.
Okay.
And I can certainly ignore that, but, you know, for example, so like, let's say this is 5,000. Well, now if we save on some portion of the O'Brien project, if we end up saving 5,000 somewhere, well, now we've got the grant money to cover this. Is that kind of what you're getting at? Just to see if the grant money can cover this, so.
So we can do it, we can do a change order on it, you think?
Um, well, technically, this would be a separate contract or agreement, so it wouldn't necessarily be a change order. But I'm saying, Chris would look at it that way, saying, well, this is a, a change to the overall project that...
Needed change.
Yeah.
It's a needed change.
Right.
Because it doesn't work for the toilets if we don't have a basic pump.
Right, and again, it's directly related to the...
End of story. So to me, that's how, it's got to be told to them, you know. End of story. So to me, that's how it's got to be told to them, you know.
Okay, I'll make a motion to purchase the pump. Is that from Mark's? Well?
Correct.
Uh, for four thousand five twenty five and to have the engineer discuss with I triple R about adding it to the project cost.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion here.
Okay, um, I will let Mark know.
Okay.
And I'll have him go ahead and, uh, I'll keep the city informed on their schedule. Like I said, I I believe he said he could basically jump on it right away. So, um, by the next meeting, hopefully, I'll have this, uh, well, it'll either be done or I'll have a timeline, so. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Corey Johnson, like as a company director.
My good evening, everyone. Uh, myself, Don Morwes, our maintenance supervisor, and Ryan Sellers are maybe looking with Michael Beck who's here this week. On Monday, kind of discussing a handful, handful of issues or concerns. Uh, and then also kind of digging into our cooperative maintenance agreement that I presented the draft copy at this spring. So a couple of things that we talked about, some of the miscellaneous items. Um, one was the painting of the white lines out on on the road here, especially right in the downtown area. So what happened there was, um, one of the main paint contractors in the state fought out a few others. There's pretty much one paint contractor and our bids came in about a hundred thousand dollars over what we were expecting. So we ended up having to try and cut as many small areas as we could. And, uh, so right now, we're probably looking at working with the board, maybe going to a three-year rotation to try and get that budget back under control. But I did take a note that next time we do come through and paint, paint the lines again, I mean, right now, it's going to be two to three years. It was a two-year rotation. We might be going to three, that we will paint those the next time that we come back through with the paint contract. Um, on the paint topic, uh, Ryan is working, he's been working on trying to get the crosswalks painted kind of as part of the construction project. He's just been really struggling getting a contractor to do that. So, um, that was on his to-do list. And then, um, as part of the cooperative maintenance agreement, any like maintenance of keeping those up would be part of the city's scope work. Who would just do the first time painting up those? You know, what is the meaning of miscellaneous? Otherwise, I'll jump into the contract.
Uh, we discussed about the power.
Street lift?
Yeah.
And, uh, I talked to Eric about it and Eric said that, who's the guy, Eric, that knows all about it?
Chambers, great Chambers.
Great, great Chambers.
They were going to do it, they were going to warp and bury all the lines, get rid of a couple of holes, clean it up.
So yeah, Ryan will continue to work with with you guys on on that, get those. Um, and then we we took some time and dove into our cooperative maintenance agreement. So this kind of covers the the maintenance on the county roads within the city. So we sat down and looked through that. So some of the changes that we were looking at from the draft version from the spring. So we, what we proposed here, um, is the county taking back the the plowing and the salping and sanding of the county roads within the city. Uh, we'd still work jointly on some of the snow removal as it builds up. Um, we provide some trucks with operators for hauling and the city would provide a loader and operator for doing that. And then we'd also, uh, do street sweeping in the spring and fall of the year. And then the other change, and then with that, it would plus doing the plowing and the salping and the sanding, who would not be providing the salt sand as payment for that? Uh, who would allow the city to purchase any that they needed from us? That was kind of the major changes. The original, I think we currently have a contract for nineteen ninety four cooperative maintenance. So we're just trying to really go through, make sure we're still, you know, who just defines with the cities. You know, we've been working with other cities as well to kind of get these contracts in place of defining who's doing what, making sure that, uh, you know, the appropriate parties are, you know, taking their their role or reversion as needed. You know, the city's doing the service. So that's what, uh, we looked at updating the contract. I sent over kind of the draft version of the changes and then if you guys were okay with that one and wanted to proceed as is, um, there was a kind of version as well. So. Any questions or comments or concerns?
I just had one question. So what, when are you going to be plowing, like early morning, five at night or?
So generally, we don't allow in the evening. So generally, we're more of a come in early. It's generally how we operate is most of the time, if it's a big snow event, we're going to try and come in at like four in the morning and start plowing. Um, talking with Don, our maintenance supervisor, his plan is basically to send a truck here through the day. So, um, it would probably be first thing in the morning generally. I mean, occasionally we'll have like an all-day snow event, you know, and then we're just, we'll be out all day kind of making a game of it. But if it's a afternoon, evening snow, overnight, kind of deal with it earlier.
How many trucks do you have?
Um, in the Nash Walk garage, I've got two graders and five trucks. So that's the garage that would cover this area.
And you have enough employees to cover that?
Yeah. Yeah, but we, you know, we generally send a truck here, you know, unless we got a significant amount of snow because then they could do the salping, you know, right away as well. Significant amount of snow, we might need a grader just to prevent durability and whatnot to come through, so.
And that also includes the Olsen Road too?
Yeah.
Still? Okay, just go on there.
We talked to, say, a little problem too, a little bit going out of town and keep calling, we'll work that out.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I would like to look at this more and not make a decision tonight. Um, I'm not seeing how the plowing on these county roads are gonna work when it was the first thing, as you were supervisor Mickey, that would go through. These are the main ones that are done. And then we go off on to others. I really find it hard that the county is going to be over here and doing this the first thing in the morning. Are you always going to start on the east end of the range and work that way? They're going to be complaining on that end of the range. So I see, I see big problems with this across the board. But I would like to read more about it, to understand it better. That's how I feel.
My discussion with Warwes was with the supervisor, was he'd be here early in the morning, way earlier than our crew had been going out. So there you go.
Do you believe that?
And what's significant? Are inches? Three inches?
We start at three o'clock. You know that. Your street, First Street is first one done. Four o'clock, look out. Those line traffic starts. Good luck.
And that's ours, you know, too.
There's a value right there. Scared, but I'm just saying.
Eric had flown over thirty five years. You're not telling me nothing I don't know.
But I'm not just telling you, I'm just explaining.
They'll be here to do their job. That's what they told me. So I'll take them by their work. They'll be here early, yes.
I have another question. Okay. So there's no charge for this, right? Other than we have to pay the sand and salt that you're going to be using or?
If you purchase, no, if you ask and purchase for your own use.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
But you wouldn't have to.
Okay, so we can buy our own and have it here and then you could use that? Is that what you're saying? Or you bring your own? Okay, so we would have our own for our homes.
And I'm working on that salt sand deal too.
Okay.
We could have a meeting with T-TAC to try to go in together with them on salt sand that I used to do years ago.
So I mean, basically, if they come in early and we still have, and you get the majority done and then we have our guys, whatever, during the day, kind of following through and cleaning up, right?
They'll have the rest, they'll go out and do the rest of our town, which they should be able to do this whole town in four hours. What's left, okay? And then they can jump on the main street if there's a windmill and start hauling that out.
Okay.
Because it'll free up a couple of hours in the morning. Plus, we're not paying for fuel, wear and tear on our equipment. They're there and all that. So anyway. And if they don't, if they don't do, you know, pull up to their end, they'll be hearing from us. Ready?
Has much changed from the previous agreement to this one? A lot or nothing really?
No, just some of the things that I highlighted.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'm in favor of doing it. It frees up our guys' time and if it's, we don't have to pay for it. I mean, we can try it. Is this, well, how long is the agreement? A year or?
Well, yeah, there's a thirty day out, but I mean, I I would kind of suggest trying it for a season.
Okay.
And if if next winter season, you guys don't see the results from us that you're looking for, we can always come back and revisit it if you want to take it back over again, you know? And that's, we can definitely work better on that. You know, you know, this is a partnership between us, you know, so.
So if we approve this now, does that include the fall sweeping?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have not really started our fall sweeping.
Okay.
So that would probably be end of September, early October here. Once the leaves start coming down really, you know, it's kind of waiting for it to kind of get those, you know, from storms or.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Itasca County Highway Maintenance for the twenty three, twenty four season, beginning October or whatever the date is.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Roll call, Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Levine?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
Counselor Jibberi?
Yes.
Counselor Maras?
Yes.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry about that, sorry.
Next up, Corey Arnold with Ford and Company.
All right, so, um, I'm just here to kind of highlight it over twenty twenty to the audit. Um, so the whole thing that I have to go over with you, I'll start in the financial statements, which is the bigger of the two, um, factors that I gave you. Um, so first off, um, the, I will go to the independent auditor's report. Four, five in there. Um, and the second paragraph, um, which is basically what you're paying us for is states, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the, um, financial statements. So your financial statements are clean. You received a non-modified opinion. Um, the the independent auditor's report goes into other things, um, what we do, why we have that basis for opinion, your responsibilities for the financial statements. So you as the council are responsible for these financial statements. And then our responsibilities for the audit of the financial statements and what we have to conform to for our standards. There is supplementary information in the financial statements. Um, we include it in there, but we do not issue an opinion on it. So it's just informational purposes and we are not saying whether it's over that. It's just in there. The other thing that we have to test is, um, to go over Minnesota state compliance. So how the city is performing with Minnesota statutes and standards. Um, and that we did not find any, um, issues or non-compliance with that. Um, your financial statements, um, are pretty much the same as they have been in the past. There's nothing, um, new or different in them. So I won't go through them in greater detail. Um, and then towards the back of the financial statement booklet, it's going to be figures thirty eight and thirty nine. This is our report on internal control, the financial reporting and on other compliance matters. So we do not, um, test your internal controls. We just go over what you have. And if anything comes to our attention where you can strengthen them, what we do, what you know. So again, we did not find that you were in non-compliance with any anything or, um, Minnesota legal compliance. But there were three things, um, that we wanted to bring to your attention as weaknesses in internal control. Um, so first, you have been in your financial statements and will probably continue to be in your financial statements. So the first one is the segregation of use. Um, again, because you are a small city and you have limited staff, you don't have, um, great segregation of use. So it is your job as the council to take responsibility of that, monitor that. Um, so I know that you're doing that by looking at financial statements, looking at, um, your purbing bills. All of that goes into your internal control processes. The second one is the lack of control over your financial reporting process. So what this means is we as your auditors prepare your financial statements because your personnel do not have the expertise to do so and it's not where there's kind of money for them to figure it out. And then the third one is new this year and, um, it's, we need to, um, implement something to prevent or detect material misstatements as part of your internal control. So what I found this year is that there were, um, three deposits under the public utility funds for twenty twenty two that got posted in twenty twenty one. Um, and nothing in your internal control process caught this. I am the one who caught it. So I did, um, briefly speak with the office staff on a way to kind of monitor that and implement some process or procedure at the end of the month to make sure that things are posting into the correct year. Um, so that's where I will have it in the financial statements. Do you have any questions on those at the moment? Okay, so then the smaller one is the report with city council. Uh, so this is our reporter communications team as, um, those who are in charge of financial statements. So the the first letter in there is just our presentation letter for the report. The second letter is our communication team at the end of the audit. So I'll just highlight a few things. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. Um, the significant accounting policies used by the city are described and don't want to the financial statements. None of the accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies was not changed during twenty twenty two. In addition, accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements prepared and are based on management's knowledge and experience about past and current events and assumptions about future events. Certain accounting estimates are particularly sensitive because of their significance to the financial statements because of the possibility that future events affecting them may differ significantly from those expected. We encounter no significant difficulties in dealing with management and perform as a good manager audit. In addition, we did make some audit adjustments to your financial statements. Um, those were signed up and discussed with management before we posted them to your account. But there were a few, um, significant material adjustments. So under the governmental funds, we did decrease the cash fund balance to remove transfers recorded as income. And under the proprietary credit fund of the public utilities, we decreased net cash position to remove transfers recorded as income. And we also increased net cash division by twenty eight thousand to recording in the current period. So, um, those were the deposits that were reported in the drawn year. We did not have any disagreements with management during our audit. Um, we request certain representations from management that are included in our management representation letter. So that is the letter that that they signed before the end tonight. And basically, that states that they give us all the information requested. They answer our questions as we ask them. They let us talk to whoever we want to talk to in the city, um, and we basically disclose the information that we ask from them. We are not aware that the city decided to consult other accounts based on any, um, opinions that we have issued on financial statements. We discussed a variety of matters during the audit, but there are not any, um, contingents on our relationship. And we reiterate that we are not in need to provide any supplementary information within the financial statements. And we reiterate that we are not in need to provide any supplementary information within the financial statements. The next seven pages are again, the three material deficiencies in, in your financial report. I just gave them to you again if you want to make sure that you have them. And then the last letter in there is just, this is less significant findings that we just want management to be aware of. And the only one we found in twenty-twenty-two was that the city and public utilities' general checking accounts were not reconciled to the general lender at December thirty-first. They were by insignificant amounts, but we just wanted to make you aware that they were not reconciled to zero, to the general lender. Any questions on this report?
What is insignificant amount?
So, during our, for our audit speakers, we have to calculate materiality. And so, we calculated for each fund, so the general company of public utilities fund has different materiality. And for your audit, based on your amount of income, your materiality is about twenty grand. Insignificant, in this case, was like a hundred and twenty dollars. So, it was, you know, when we talk about materiality, we talk about, is it going to influence someone's opinion on your financial statements? If it's under the materiality limit, it's not going to change how someone feels the city is doing. When we look at the city's income, a hundred and twenty dollars is not going to change someone's opinion on your financial statements.
Thank you.
And then I got a question?
Yes.
So, we were transferring money, and maybe is this part of that money that we were talking about from the proprietary fund into the street savings to pay them back? And that was in this year, and I didn't see anything that you had any issues with that. We were taking service charge, eighty percent of the service charge on the bills per month. And then it was transferred into the street savings.
Yes, so that's just a transfer between the two funds, and that is reported in your financial statements. There isn't due to other funds on both sides.
Right.
And it's reported in there.
But we were told we can't do that, and you didn't write anything in here. What, what did you say? That we can't take that money from the public utilities fund and pay that money to the street department?
That would be a legality issue, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm just looking at your financial statements. So, if you did it, I'm just reporting in your financial statements. If you legally can't, that's not my idea.
So, that wasn't that hundred and nine or any of those that were off? That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Any other questions?
So, where, yeah, I do have one. Where are we sitting on our proprietary funds then? I mean, are we? I know we had the, you know, with the project and all that with the sewer. But it looks like, you know, we had a loss of a hundred and fifty.
Are you on like?
I'm on page eight.
Yes, so on the cash basis, the way it worked out was a loss of a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five.
Total, of all the funds?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
In twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty, okay.
So, this is like nine months ago.
Okay, right, okay. So, then, so, because we had some questions on all those adjustments that had to get made?
So, what I tried to explain, and this is, I'm going to make it a really complicated amount to your question. So, the city qualifies for cash basis reporting. So, the first four or five financial statements in your, in your financial statement report is on the cash basis, cash in, cash out.
Right.
If you don't get cash, or if you don't spend cash, it's not recorded in there. There is a supplemental schedule for the public utilities fund that is on the accrual basis. So, that's basically money owed is reported as income. Money owed to the public utilities for, you know, like December rates or whatever is reported as income. And so, basically, what I do in my process, if we took over the city's audit, there were accruals sitting on the books in Banyan. And so, what I do is I, actually, what happens throughout the year is the office is recording things on the cash basis. Nothing is hitting accounts receivable, nothing is hitting accounts payable, because everything is going in another cash basis. What I do is I adjust those accrual accounts in your system to the accrual basis. And then, in a system that you can't see, because it's part of my work papers, I just back onto the cash basis for your financial statements. So that I always know what that accrual balance is, because it's here, it's not only in my work papers. So, a lot of those adjustments were just accrual versus cash changes. There were nothing like that the office was doing incorrectly or anything like that. The only, I think I looked it over with Beth one day when she was trying to clarify this. The only significant adjustment that was made that was done incorrectly was the deposits in the wrong year. So, that's super complicated, and it's accrual versus cash accounting, but that's why there's adjustments. And a lot of the time, we, I end up with more adjustments because I could lump them all in one, but for clarification purposes, I separate them out so I know what's happening every year. So, again, it's just, it's the way, it's my system, basically, of doing it and making sure I keep track of everything correctly.
So, and that's only on?
That's only on the public utilities.
So, how did, how did the accruals get there?
When we took it over ten years ago, they were there somehow, and we, I just keep keeping them there so that I know.
Because, I mean, I believe you've been on cash basis basis since.
And, and one of the prior auditor was doing the same thing. Just keeping them on your books, so that if someone else was to come in and say, well, what was your account receivable at December thirty-first, whatever? If it wasn't in your system, you wouldn't be able to answer that. It would only be at your auditor's office.
Gotcha.
And then, that's probably not a good, we're not supposed to preserve your information anymore.
Right. Okay. Mayor?
Yes, I have a question.
So, have these adjustments been happening every year?
Yes.
This is not something uncommon to their audit?
This is every year, these same adjustments are happening.
Okay. And the three adjustments in the wrong year? We need to research to see if we can close out the year in Banyan, so that never happens again, once we're done with our audit.
Yeah, so what I was thinking, what we had discussed, since that's a, that's a significant weakness that we had this year. What we had discussed is, last year, because the audit ended so late, the year wasn't closed, closed out, is probably one issue. And then, I suggested to Beth that talk to Banyan and see if you can close it here and lock it, so it can't change. The other suggestion that I made was, there is a report within Banyan that shows the receipts recorded in Banyan for the month. And I know that the office has their own annual spreadsheet of deposits that went into the bank. And just comparing the two, because that probably should have caught it, because you would have been off in the month of what went into the bank versus what was recorded in Banyan for that month. Because the deposit wouldn't have showed up. So, there are a few things that end of month, probably could catch something like this.
So, you should be able to work in two years on the system? You should be able to work?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was just.
But I mean, if it's getting to the point where it's August?
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's kind of lengthy. That's why cash basis has to be done by March thirty-first. So, and I guess I'm confused as to why it never was, even though we weren't really on an accrual basis, but we were kind of pretending that we were and not getting the audits done. I'm confused on that.
We never engaged to report by March thirty-first. We can't, we're a tax preparation firm, that's in the middle of tax season. So, that is, we were never asked to report by March thirty-first. And it was always August thirty-first until we started having changeover in the office and all problems, because that makes it harder on the audit.
Right.
So, that's why the audits had to be done later, and now that there was like a study person in the office this year, it's been a little similar. So, again, that would have done in August. But we were never engaged to report by March thirty-first, we would not have taken on the engagement if that were going to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, unfinished business. Approve independent contract agreement between East Itasca County Wastewater Drive, Power, and Community Resource Development. All right, our costs, hmm, is that a full year, three thousand dollars?
Per month.
Per month.
Mayor Levine, I can refresh your memory. You had attended the Nashvah Community Joint Meeting, and when we were discussing the contract with them, you had asked if they would take a lesser amount, and they, yep, and they did choose to do that. And they also provided us with a copy of their insurance liability for you to review as well. So, I have a question. So, this, so they agreed to do thirty-three thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And is that only our fee, or is that getting split between all three entities?
It'll be three thousand a month, so we'll be paying a thousand a month.
Okay, so it's a thousand to each entity, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve contingent on receiving an updated contract. And that it specifies in the contract that it's split between three entities.
Who's got it? All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, seven-two, update by the chief whip in on the five-twenty-one North Second Street property cleanup.
Yes, I got this all laid out, then I got kind of a monkey wrench thrown at me, and Counselor Johnson was in my office when that happened. I see it up here. The property owner's son came in my office and was laying out everything and asked for two more weeks. To, Counselor Johnson was just in my discussion with this person. It's been going on for three years, basically, and nothing called summer. What are you going to get done in two weeks? Throw all the cars out of there, get all the outside cleaned up. He said, you should probably come to the council meeting, and tell this to the city council. Did not, so, not here. After hearing that, I mean, I had, I'd been waiting on estimates from contractors and from general waste. My plan was to have, I had Dennis from General Waste, he and I went up to the property, boy, about a month or so ago. And I showed him what I wanted to do, what I needed to clean up. And he said, I would probably need one more dumpster for MSW, mixed solid waste, and one for demolition. And they would deliver those on site, and my plan was then to have a contractor clean it up. I still have, yet to hear back from them, but I have one of mine that's been used in giving for small bike cleanups. And with, they're not having to take anything anywhere, just basically tossing everything in the dumpsters and So, it'd be a day's work. So, the price for the dumpsters was eight hundred and eighty dollars. So, with the, those people coming in and asking for the two weeks, I think she's showing again that, bending over backwards, that that two-week period will give me the time I need to line this up. They, okay, here's your two weeks, then next council meeting, which is the twenty-seventh, two weeks from today. Okay, if it's not done, then I hit the ground running to get this one done. So, it would be eight hundred and eighty dollars, it says a hundred and fifty per ton, or per ton, most actually over three tons, which I don't anticipate. So, then the price of taking something to clean it up. So, I would ask that that's how I proceed. Here's the two-week window. Either they do it in the two weeks, like they requested, or come the twenty-seventh, then I enact my plan.
Nice with it, Brian.
Hmm?
Hey, nice with it, Brian.
That's bad.
So, what's the total cost?
Eighty is what I have right now for the dumpsters. I don't have a chance for someone to come.
And by clean, so that would be someone coming and filling the dumpsters?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how are we going to recoup our money with this?
The only way to really do it is an assessment.
And have they been paying their taxes?
It's not as liquid as I thought it was.
Okay.
I mean, this, I mean, I've talked with Ryan about this too, and this was his recommendation, and I don't really know what else to do. Either they do it, or we do it, and it sinks, because whatever cost, we're getting probably, honestly.
Well, this is, if I can, I mean, it's, it's one of those things where we want our town cleaned up, and we know that we don't have a lot of money. But it has to happen, I mean, it just has to. This is three years, I mean, and.
You know, I have exhausted all resources, I mean, citations on the court, guilty deadlines. I mean, I'm just, you know, this is unfortunately, this is the end of hope, so. I mean, I'm on a guess, between five hundred thousand to pay someone, so if we have eighteen hundred dollars into it.
She can't build, whether owns the property, owns the building.
Typically, you know, you could try that, I just don't think they pay it, and I don't know that assessments usually, that cities go about collecting this. Because it's kind of hard to find the responsible party to, who's in the place, is it the owner doing it? You know, probably, no. So, we could certainly look and see if there's any other options, and you want us to look into, we can certainly try that, but assessments are typically the.
You send them to the bill, goes to collections.
Right, then you have to go with your judgment, if your judgment proves you go with that.
Of course, so.
Can we send an invoice first, and then if it doesn't, then we can assess it. We have till November to assess anyway, so.
Whatever we can do, if we can do that, then whatever else.
I'll check, I'll check in on legality of that for you guys later.
I mean, at least they'll, you know, either, maybe they'll pay some.
They might.
You don't know.
But also, with an assessment, in all reality, we do not ever have to rent back to that person or anything unless they pay their bills. So, that's something that we, they wouldn't be able to come back into this town unless their assessments are taken care of.
I believe there are assessments on that property.
I believe there is, yeah, with utilities, so.
To the molly.
Oh, there's, okay.
So, there's molly assessments already there.
It's ready to go down. So, if you can't, if it's inhabitable, it's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything, this is just tip of the iceberg, it's the outside.
Yeah.
Then, what's going to become of the structure and everything inside is going to come on us. I mean, we don't want that, but I
And granted, yeah.
Really throws up.
I just, I don't feel they're going to pay if it, it gets assessed, it's not happening, so.
I think, I can just see walking away from it. I mean, I have verbal confirmation or even do anything with this house, this property.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to try the invoice.
Sure.
And see what happens.
I can talk to Ryan, we can look at some kind of letter, make sure it's, we do it appropriately, make sure, make a step out of it. And as Counselor Johnson said, the one leverage you have with the assessments is that you have some control over who comes back in, right? Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, the contractor, please, you said you mentioned, do you have any, like, plenty? You said you have a potential contractor that you would talk to? You haven't talked to any yet, or?
I have.
You have?
I asked for an estimate.
Okay.
To, we have everything outside the track yard completely available, so.
So, you're feeling pretty good, though, about that person committing to it? Hopefully, hopefully.
Because all the bigger companies don't want contractors, because it's not a big enough job, where they contacted, like, the office and all, and, like, all the, the big ones. Well, no, we're not big enough.
Well, and the only reason why I even ask is because I fully trust your process, Chris, of what you're doing. I just, if they can't do it, and then it's like three weeks, four weeks, and then they're still gaining ability, go in and out, in and out. I wonder if it's just appropriate to say that, once we secure this contractor, you're done, like, they're going to be hired, they're going to go in there, and then.
Well, that's the two, the two weeks.
That's what the two weeks is, they're done after that.
Yeah.
They'll never get back in there, yeah.
They force them to the worst, I don't know, or anyone, us, or, then the city crew, you pay them overtime, go in there, if they want to do it, like, I mean, that's another option too, I mean. I mean, using our...
Well, we're a volunteer group and so I just want to make sure that what we throw out there, we can indeed honor, you know, because I know last time, and if I kind of understand very well, we, the son was taken down by them when they weren't supposed to enter.
I don't know whether to get down or it's gone.
I think it was gone.
It was posted in the yard, like, but that's when they went and started to do some cleanup. So they really saw it, took it and, you know, there was another copy too that she personally got.
Okay. Well, I'll support whatever you want to put out there, so.
I have one more question for you, Chris. The 800 dollars, is that just for the roll-off? That is not for hauling it over to the landfill?
Uh, no, that's, that's everything that's...
Oh, okay.
And they said they would give us, that's for the, uh, the garbage box, the demolition box free.
And that has to go to St. Louis Company?
Yeah, they said that eight eighty is high. No, I don't go because of the KITM fees at I Tasci County.
Yeah.
Are high.
Okay. But I understand where you're going.
It's St. Louis Company, but it's...
I'm in favor of two weeks and that's it, you know?
So we need a motion.
Any kind of motion or not through that, but that's, that's my two plans, okay? You said it yourself, you wanted two weeks. Here is the next meeting, then hopefully I have an estimate.
Okay, I'll make a motion then for that to happen by, um, September 27th. That would be exactly two weeks like you stated and you should be able to have the contractors thing by then and move forward to get it cleaned up.
Yes.
I'll support it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, I'm just gonna leave you with this, the while we're on this, but this is the future. Whatever, whatever the letter I sent, I worked on with Brian and how we're tackling that. Just for your own information to read on your, or whatever. Yeah.
Thanks, Mary. Yep. All right, new business. Review and adopt proposal from CLA, Mary Reedy, CPA, CTM, choose on contract to be provided.
We received one proposal for our, um, request for looking for a new auditor firm from Mary Reedy from CPA. It's included in your packets. Did you guys have a chance to review it? Counselor Levine, um, could you?
It's CLA, CPA's her, she's a CPA.
I'm sorry. Counselor Levine, could you please, um, you did some background for?
I did.
For me?
So I did call, um, I don't know if anybody else checked on the references. Um, I did reach out to, um, other clerks in the area as well to see what, or other cities, to see what their audits cost them. Um, basically, this is a pretty reasonable price. Most of them were upwards of 30-ish, um, for the same size city. The ones that, um, I did contact, um, said they're very happy with this firm. They do a thorough job. Um, they didn't have any, any, anything bad. They help out, um, you know, they'll come and, you know, work in the office probably one day. I know they are in Saint Cloud, but, um, she said they can do a lot of, um, remote engagement as well, so, um, it's, and I know, uh, like Tori had said, it's hard to find a firm that is gonna get the cash basis done because most of them are in tax season, so. Um, and Walker Drew was one of the, uh, ones I had recommended or talked to them as well. They do our city, uh, and they do Nashua.
They were here previously.
Okay, and so they're, one of the gentlemen that's been there for over 20 years is gonna be retiring, so they're kind of short-staffed and really can't take it on right now, so.
Some of the questions I have with it, I don't know if anyone else had looked at it, is the, um, they don't have anything for the proprietary fund, which is odd to me. It's to be announced and, but she also...
Pardon?
But she also said that she would be getting back to us. At that point, then they're each gonna be charging. So I mean, at this 25,000 for the first year, it's for sure gonna be 31, I'm thinking, or 32. But then I'm also looking at this, um, G A S B 96 software. Is that compatible with Banyan? Do we have to have that? Um, how is that working with Banyan?
That, that's not a software.
Oh, it isn't? What is it?
No, it's G A S B 96, so it's implementing a new standard.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's for fiscal years ending after December 15, 2021.
Okay.
You might do whatever year, I'm not on it.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just, she has to implement a new standard, so it's gonna be, they break that key out because that's not every year thing, once it's implemented, it's done.
Right.
So it's just implementing a new standard that came out.
Okay, but don't we have that going already? How did you do it? Because it's the government accounting standard.
Yep, but it's, so standards come out every year and they have different implementation periods. So this is a new one that was, you, was not created for 2022. Um, so you were under G A S B 96, I'm gonna do it. It's a new standard that came out.
Okay.
So you have to, then every year you have to implement a new standard. So I always want to have the standards coming out.
That's why it's only charged a new one.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just thought that that was high and you don't know what the other ones are gonna be. I know we're stuck, you know, but yikes.
And they are doing a full accrual of the proprietary, so.
But no charge to it, so I mean, it could be 10,000 or, yeah, right.
So the question I have then is, does it have to have a full accrual or not?
It only has to have a full accrual unless someone has your information. I don't know, probably because she doesn't know what your system is at the moment, which is why that's to be determined, like, how much work is gonna go into that, she doesn't know.
Yeah. And maybe because, excuse me, she's only looked at past audits and saw that it's there or whoever they do, yeah.
But it's a, it's a unknown factor of what your looks look like versus what do I have to report, how much work goes into that. So that's...
Okay, could we, um, contact them and find out and let them know the reason behind this accrual stuff and kind of have a look at that? I mean, we're not, probably not gonna have another option, so, but at least we can see what it would be.
You just directed me to contact her.
Yes, and just find out what the TBD is gonna be and kind of explain, you know?
And she thought she might be able to have that to us. When you ran through this, did she, you know, a certain amount? But then I didn't, I didn't know if we were gonna have it tonight or not, so she must be working on that stuff.
So we'll just put this on the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, I'll cover eight point two.
Do you want to add it to the next council meeting or do you want to add it to the special meeting? It would be the preference of the council.
It's fine, if you're, if we need it done right away.
The next meeting, okay. I'll make a motion to add this, uh, to the September 20th special meeting agenda.
I'll sit there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, eight point three, review quotes for lower from McCoy, Ziegler, RMS for street department. Eric?
Counselor Levine, um, the pricing changed a little bit here and I'll explain since you've got this post. Cat did not have source for pricing. So their price came down to 226, 857. Deer had that in the forecast, 209. And then fairness, Komatsu's price included forks. They're 7,500, 75, 74, and 72 cents. Here's the number, that's right. 75, 74.
Is that RMS?
Through RMS. And, um, try and make this short. Komatsu would come with smoke caps. Um, that's a $3,000 upgrade. The other two are already built and not put in different types. So you gotta consider the 3,000 for that. Cat and Deer have a three-year, $3,000 warranty. Komatsu is five, 2,000. That, we put about 500 dollars a year on the loads that we have. So it works out much better as far as warranty. So, um, forks, tires, warranty are in their favor and their price without the forks was 203, 165, and 87 cents. So they had the best price as well. I spent some time with these guys this afternoon trying to figure this out.
That was RMS then?
Yes, RMS.
The 203, okay.
Yes, 203 was RMS.
Okay. I just had a question. Were you, were they looking at, um, trade on anything? Trading in anything we had or are we keeping?
They offered 15,000 for the machine we have now. It's worth more to us than that.
The, the older one or the...
No, the older one.
Okay.
Cat, to get the engine rebuilt.
Yes.
Forty-five to five, is it 4,500? No.
Thousand?
Forty-five thousand? Yep. Like, the machine's not even worth 20,000 dollars, why would?
Wow.
So I have no idea what they're thinking, but that was the service guy at Ziegler. I questioned it, like I said, 4,500 seems a little cheap for 45,000.
Wow.
That makes no sense.
No.
So, um, I suggest we just get it on Mandeville. I think it'll still bring even, it's rebuildable, you know, if someone does it themselves, but to pay Ziegler to do it, obviously that doesn't make any sense. So put it on Mandeville as it starts up and runs, but if you put any freeze in it, it changes. Uh, I thought there was another offer on that rebuild post, but they, they've checked on it some more, you know, or see if we can locate a complete used engine that, you know, into the shape.
Yeah.
That's what the guy at Cat said. He said their parts are still available for that whole machine, you know?
Cause you do want to have a spare, you know?
Right, but what makes sense is...
Right.
...a newer machine. That 95 has been too bad to us. Not one single repair.
We never did get a price on fixing that one, you know, the machines that we had with it.
You know, if we're gonna use it as a second machine, just keep it greased, keep it oiled, you know, that lasts a long time. It's gonna need tires, so, um, Compsul's the cheapest, but it's gonna be 10, 11,000 dollars for tires.
Hmm.
So...
So, yeah. Well, what do you, should we just kind of see? How about the used? Have you been able to find anything?
I think not one of these three had anything used available.
Okay.
The Deer guy left me a message. It was meant for somebody else though. He said he had used machine, I think I talked to him about it. And then I called him, this doesn't make any sense. Called me John, and you're talking about a 325, there is no such thing, that's an excavator. I think that message for you. So that's all. He did not have it.
Okay.
Yes, Beth?
Eric, were you able to look at that piece of equipment that Officer Whitney phoned that was yours?
It was too small.
Okay.
That's a compact.
Okay.
That's smaller than what we have.
Okay.
I wasn't asking you to look for a order. No, I've looked at used and I could certainly look, I mean, yeah, you can find them in Illinois and whatever, Southern Minnesota, yeah, um, they're all there, there are used machines, but what are you buying? Are you gonna get somebody else's problem? You never know, you never know.
So can you come up with just a cost that it's gonna take to get the one we have? Like, we need tires, you know, just what, what do we need to do to that one?
What do we have to do with it?
Yeah. And come up with a price for the next meeting and then, I mean, obviously, it'd be nice to have a new one, but we gotta figure out where the money's coming from.
I understand, I just, yeah, some information. I knew it was into the morning we're denied, but I mean, you gotta do the schedule for tomorrow.
Yep.
But, um, in the end, yeah, and Jake is the only one that actually came up with that.
Okay.
And went over things, he's, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe just if he keeps an eye out too for something.
Right, and like, you know, he did have those ones a year and a half ago that were 130,000, three of those exact same machine where you got four of them, it was only making 270s, you know, but that was a year and a half, March 22. It was long gone, I almost got it.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, number eight four. Proven payer request number 16 from USA for QOT Nashua Forest Main and Lift Station. 104,000, 2158.
We could have taken this one earlier, so Jeremy ended up taking it.
Just real quick, I guess, I, I don't have any time, me and Alan just wanted to make sure that your questions were, like, passed along. So it's still not on file, it looks like, so we're still holding all 22,000 retainage. Um, I guess are any, any questions from the council just right off the bat, like?
I have a question. What about the fine that we discussed many times, 500 dollars a day? I mean, we, we suffered, our city had to pay through the teeth because this project wasn't done on time. And we gave them, it was supposed to be done in October, then it was June, then it was July, then it was August. We didn't get it done till August 15th. And all those months, we ended up, uh, having to pay Peoples 9,000 every month, what was it, 95, I think?
98 or something.
Every one of those months. And then when August came and we switched over, now we're paying them 100, 800 dollars a day.
Peoples or?
Peoples, that's why we pulled that invoice because, um...
I mean, it was getting killed by this, like, print's name.
I mean, I...
And if I remember correctly, when Alan was here, one of the times when they explained it, I think this got brought up and Alan said that, yeah, he'd look into it. So I'll, I'll follow up with him and see what he can, what he can act on, what, uh, who he needs to talk to. Cause I know this is a joint project, so I want to make sure that he goes through the right avenues, because I don't know if it would be Nashua at all or...
No.
It would just be for this piece of it? Okay. I'll, uh...
You know, before we go paying any, any final bills, we have to get that set out and there might be...
So...
...to be prepared for, um, before we're done.
What is the final? I can't read these numbers. There's retainage of 20.
First one was 16.
Um, this, yeah, this last one, no, that's in the pack.
Okay, so it's 21, 757, 95?
That's the retainage?
Correct.
And what's the, what's the balance left after this payment?
With what, what items still need to be completed?
Right, we, well, I mean, you know, right.
The full balance.
And when, when's the punch list coming?
Uh, I know that you just, after our last meeting, I know Alan was working on that, um... So I can, I can check with Alan where the, where the punch list is. I, I was under the impression it was going on right now.
We haven't done it yet. We're supposed to go down to the.
Still working, okay.
And all get together and go down and make sure that.
Well, there was gonna, uh, yeah, that, that rings a bell. You, you and Alan are gonna meet with the contractor on site and physically work through it, and that would be the punch list where you come up with that, so.
Okay.
I'll see if Alan, uh, I'll, I'll let Alan give you a call, and then we can, and then that can be coordinated and get underway, so.
Mary Louie?
Yes.
Jeremy, I did ask for Alan to call the mayor yesterday.
Oh.
In the afternoon, and that didn't happen, so.
Oh.
It is important that we hear from him.
Yes.
So the retainage keeps changing on every bill?
Correct, yep.
So it's, what, what is it based on? What's?
So the retainage on the project is essentially, I'll try to give you an analogy. If the contractor does a hundred dollars worth of work and you hold five percent retainage. You're only paying them ninety-five dollars. You're just, you're just not paying them that extra five. It just, it, the retainage is only released once the project is finalized. It's a little bit of a, um, basically something that the city has in their back pocket to save. It, it ensures that the punch list gets done. So it's, it's not an additional fee. It, it changes every time, because every time when the contractor does more work, the work completed to date amount. It's just five percent of whatever that number is. So that's why it goes up there for payment, unless it, you're, you're basically holding back more and more money every time. You're holding back five percent of the work that was completed to date.
The work completed to date, okay.
Um, and, and it's not paid to the contractor. The, the contractor has done. That long work, but you're holding back that five percent to ensure that the punch list gets done and that the project is tied off. Correct, so, so yeah, I, I don't want there, you know, can, um, there's any confusion on the retainage. It's not an additional fee, it's not um something that gets. Added to the overall project cost. It gets added at the very last payer list.
Okay, so.
And then it then zeros out the project.
So if we've paid twenty thou- what is that, twenty-two million, something, twenty-five?
Completed to date, the top one panel?
Oh, yeah, so that, yeah, completed to date.
Okay, it's two million, one seventy-five, seven ninety-four, eighty-three.
Okay. Then if we, what we've paid, the tw- two zero, what is that?
Two five.
Two five, seven.
Seven eighty, seven seventy-eight, sixty-four.
And we're supposed to pay the one twenty-eight. Aren't we almost, is that the retainage then, the difference between those numbers? And so if they're not done. Is their punch list gonna be more than the twenty-one, seven?
Um, so the punch list, unless there is something that's added to the scope of work, the punch list is not. Um, additional work. It, it's basically.
What they have to complete within the scope of the project.
Yeah, yep, it's, I'm trying to think of a, another way to explain that.
Right. Yeah.
But yeah, the, the punch list is not, it's, there, there could be items that like, you know, uh, the punch list could be, you know, let's make sure the turf establishment is a hundred percent satisfactory. So like instead of point five, you know, the turf establishment amount might go to one. Because now you're gonna pay a hundred percent of the turf establishment because you verified that with the punch list. So there is a little bit extra, but the majority of the punch list is just to make sure that, um, you know, if there's any work that was missed, it gets, so yeah.
But I mean, by paying this and at, if we're going to look at this five hundred dollars a day, the retainage obviously is not covering that. So how does that work? Is that gonna be a whole separate issue going to court, or what's, how does that work?
Honestly, I've never gotten that point on a project yet, so.
I haven't either.
Yeah, exactly. I think that's all, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn. I, I don't really know, to be honest. Um, I will talk to Alan, and I don't know if it's true, he has.
I don't have the contract in front of me, so you have to take a look at the contract to see what kind of, if there's a damage provision or what type.
Yeah, it was five hundred dollars a day. Um, but the thing is, they've never come back to this council and asked for an extension. Anything.
To my knowledge, we've never done a change order for a date extension.
Right.
For the project.
And um S E H, Ellie can attest to this one. We just had one all caught park that. They weren't gonna finish by their date, and they gave us a change order to extend the date of the project by two weeks, so that's.
And that's.
Not even a costly, it's an informational thing that needs to be done, and I don't think it's ever been done here. So.
Yeah.
It's never been approved, that they, you know, they assumed dates from way back when, and so-and-so said this date, so-and-so said that. Well. It should've been verified in writing. Going forward.
And the fines, have they been, are they pending still? The fine amounts? You said it was five hundred?
It's five hundred dollars a day is what the fine is.
It still hasn't been paid though.
We've never done anything about it?
So it's liquidated damages.
Yeah, exactly, you're right.
So, yeah, uh, it sounds like none, none of that has been added to the mod, yeah.
I would like to get the information on that.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, even with the July first date, that's why we canceled the people's service contract. And just kind of had them on call, basically, because we were supposed to be connected, and that never happened, but no one ever came back and said, oh, sorry, we can't do it July first. You know, change order for August first, nothing happened, so, I mean. If you even started in June, July, and August, fifteen, it's. Yeah, lots of money. So I guess, how do we approach that? Um, and I think we had talked to Brian about it, but, um, you know, so he was aware of it as well, but I'm not sure what the follow-up procedure is.
And I'll talk to Alan about those two items. So the liquidated damages essentially, and a lot through punch list, so make sure that that gets scheduled, so.
Okay.
And I can relate to Brian that either wanting some information from him or me about that, to take a look at that.
Okay.
And I can talk to Bethan about getting a contract for the project, getting the documentation. If you can find it for me, or if you had a firm.
It's the big book.
We can hold, if you have any questions, to much meaning. I think we're good.
I would like to tell.
All right, till the next meeting.
Do we go first and do that? Well, we're gonna pay him, but we just wait for the information.
Thirty days, yeah, and this is dated September eighth, so.
So, yeah, I, it.
And I guess I kind of wanna know, is there gonna be more pay estimates? You know, we don't have a final yet, so.
Right.
What's the final, proposed final?
I mean, just looking at. Yeah, a couple of random items that I see that, um, I can see being added. Turf establishments, one, a lot of the lump sum items. Um, most of them are completed, so I don't think. Any of the turf establishments.
Well, there's gonna be, they're gonna have some more work to do down there, because they got, what Will has to pay for extra for that is uh, put that uh backup uh valve on the end of our uh.
Oh, yeah.
Line, that's gotta be done, and we're also gonna have to close off the old line, the F, the F level line that goes into the creek. That's not getting the side of the road.
Okay.
That's gonna have to be dug up and capped, so it's gonna be a little bit more work.
And then be considered, yeah, and so that be considered additional work.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
But then we had a discussion about like some of the, the curb and gutter and the street damage that was done. That would be a punch list item, and then you show, I can say that's on the contractor. So the, the punch list is gonna have a lot of different things on it, so some isn't gonna be the city's responsibility, some is gonna be part of the project, so.
And I think we need to get it done before snow flies, so.
Right.
Yeah. Especially these other extras, and then, um, if you can talk to Alan, get us um the inform- to get us the information on where we're at with our funds.
Okay.
Exactly.
I need a motion. Bring this to the next meeting.
Anything else I can pass along? I apologize, he couldn't be here tonight to answer questions, but um I'll talk to him tomorrow.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Eight five, approved, twenty twenty-four senior goal Medicare supplement plan.
Looks like it didn't go up that much, five bucks, five fifty, yeah. I'll make a motion, approve.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Eight six, adopt resolution for sale of the two thousand and nine Impala. Orphaned car from the police department.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Chris. Eight seven, adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Nashua area community foundation for materials to repair the boy scout log cabin. Materials will include exterior doors, interior heat source, and bathroom toilet.
I'll get the motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Have any reports? You want to have any reports, you have your balance, you adjourn this meeting.
Um, just.
Yes, officer.
Just on the special meeting on the twenty, okay, we have the, uh, review is at four thirty, correct? That's for the review, okay. And then the five o'clock will be the discussion for the auditor and then the budget, correct? Okay, just wanna make sure.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay.
And then I also have one thing too, that I would like, um, the, to have a directive, however you wanna do it, to get the um. Calendar on the website done. It hasn't been touched, it has nothing. When you open up the website, there's nothing there. And we used to have, um, the garbage pickup, the recycling on it, the council meetings on it. What else was on it? The days that it was closed, um, all the stuff that we need to have on that. When you open up our website, it's just a calendar. It doesn't give our residents any information as to what's going on. So I would like to see that update a little bit.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay, I'll start.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anything else?
Um, I would like to go down to the meeting, the annual meeting down at Minnesota Power. Um, it's October eighteenth. I don't know if you wanna um put it on to the next meeting, but it wouldn't be a thirty-day notice, so I don't know what your thoughts are on it. Is it okay if we just transfer it to the end of September meeting?
Uh, probably.
Okay, but it's not the thirty days, so, okay.
And I think we have a meeting as well for M C F away that she's not gonna go.
Okay. All right, that's it. I don't need to do anything on that. I don't just see that.
Okay.
Motion, I'll make a motion to a juror.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a juror.